We'd like to call the meeting to order. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, public is required to wear face masks and social distancing measures have been put in place. City is landed. City is landed. Reminder, before the meeting begins, we ask that you silence your cell phones. We will be leading our invocation by Councilmember Richard Cook and Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Sandra Crosby. Mayor McCall, would you please poll the council members?
Councilmember Richard Cook. Councilmember Allison Robinson. Present. Councilmember Sandra Fleming Crosby.
Present.
Mayor Protem, Nicole Sinisteri.
Present.
Councilmember Wilhelmina Scott.
Present.
And Councilmember William Haskins.
Present.
Mayor Anderson, I find it is your floor, present.
Thank you. At this time, we need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor, by show of hands. Next, we need approval of minutes from Tuesday, January 11, 2022, regular city council meeting, Tuesday, January 18, 2022, special called city council meeting, and minutes from the Tuesday, January 25, 2022, special called city council meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. All those in favor, by show of hands. Only agenda is presentations, recognition of Dr. Ronald McNair by Ms. Gloria Tisdale. She isn't here at the moment, so if she shows up, we will try to make a way to put her in there. We do realize that this, we just had the anniversary of Dr. McNair, and just want to say thanks to all of those that showed up and came out to remember one of our hometown heroes. We have many, but he's one of them as well. And we should always remember those that came along before us. Public comment period. Comments are limited to two minutes per person. No personal or verbal attacks will be entertained. The council is interested in hearing your concerns, but speakers should not expect council action or deliberation on subject matters brought up during the public comment period. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to the city administration and may be scheduled for a future agenda. Please make sure to sign in and leave your name and address for the record with the city clerk of council. Please do not comment on your address when you, if you're speaking, and come up to the microphone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just have one question. I don't know what time you got. When you do resolutions, like, is this a resolution? How do you give a name? How do you replace it over resolutions? You break it off to date or whatever? Is that possible? You could note that on the paper? This is.
Resolution 2022 dash point 016, right? Can you have a little bit more detail? The average person who may not live at City Hall like I do might want to have a few more answers. You know, because sometimes y'all just vote and nobody asks questions. And we be wanting questions, you know, because there's not enough information in that for us. So is it possible you can state whether this is a new resolution, old resolution? If it's a newer one, what is it replacing? A little bit more information on the resolution. Maddie Thomas, do I have to say the rest? Okay.
If you say anything, go ahead.
Thank you.
May I add your address on that view sheet to your?
First one?
Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to page two. Legislative.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
Mayor and Council, we have, I'd like to present to you for first reading ordinance number for the city of 2022-002, first reading, and ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval to enter into a mutual aid agreement with the city of King Street Police Department and the city of Lake City Police Department, South Carolina, and all matters related thereto.
Okay. The floor is now open for a motion to approve ordinance 2022.002 for first reading.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2022.002, first reading.
Sorry.
Properly moved in second. Any questions or discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
Seems like we did an ordinance, mutual grade of agreements about four or five years ago, and I remember specifically one was done between Lake City and King Street. So what's, what's happened with that?
Usually when they have a management change, chief change, they like to update those ordinances. And we both have chief changes here, King Street and as well as Lake City of Lake City. Yes, sir. Is that not a true statement, Patrick?
That's correct.
But now they've, how, how much time do we have after the change that the ordinance is supposed to be, be in effect, going to effect?
And there is no timing, to my understanding. They can make the request at any point they feel that they need to recertify a mutual aid agreement between the two organizations.
Okay. Now, do we have mutual aid agreements between Orlando, Scranton, Cowart still in effect? And I think Orlando.
What we've been saying is, when other entities request, we bring it before council, then we send out our request, and then good before their council. This issue is just one of the first ones painted since we've had the chief.
Okay. Now, you remember how long it's been since, we had the first one that I remember ever doing since I've been on council. We have information on when that.
We can research that and get it back to you.
No, it wasn't.
A couple of years ago, we did a bunch of that.
Yeah, we did. Yeah. I remember Kip was here at the time, and I remember when he came on board, a bunch of them had done it same, at the same time.
We'll look into that and give you a date on each of those.
Okay. Now, let me ask though, how long has Chief Kip been in King Street?
December, November?
Six, eight months.
Yeah.
So then Chief Cooper's been here?
Since April. Around about, correct?
So you're saying Chief Kip has been there since this past December?
I'm not sure on that. I just realized in November, December, he was in King Street.
Of '21?
Of this past year, correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
William.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain to the ones that does not understand, you know, what this mutual aid agreement consists of?
All right. Patrick, you want, you're the, the major. You want to speak and make sure you cover all the bases there, so I don't leave anything out.
Absolutely. It's mainly for legality, legal reasons. If King Street needs help, if they're having an event in King Street, that mutual aid agreement allows our officers to go there and operate under either our policy or their policy and be covered legally when we, if we were to make an arrest there or something like that, and vice versa, when their officers come here. So the mutual aid isn't just for them, it's for us as well. We use their, their officers and they use ours, once it's approved. The party gets approved through council, and then the chief of King Street would typically send a request to the chief of Lake City. And I need a request for, let's say hypothetically, five officers for this event, and the chief would approve five or approve two or however many and send them over. So it's basically just for legal reasons, that, that paperwork.
But in reality, they're pretty much, and with this agreement, deputizing them to operate in, in King Street as an official officer of the piece for King Street.
Yes. Now, it doesn't allow an officer from Lake City to go to King Street without approval.
Uninvited.
Or, yeah, uninvited or prior notification or anything like that. They don't get to go to King Street and just start stopping cars and, and making arrests. There has to be a approval process before that happens.
And the request, yes. Request has to be made. So there is request in writing?
It, it depends on how soon it is. If it's something that's planned out, it can be in writing. If it's something that's immediate, let's say King Street's got hypothetically, again, a barricaded suspect, and they need some of our equipment or some of our officers with help on the perimeter or whatever, typically that would not be in writing, that would just be a phone call.
Okay. Earlier, you said they, they are needed for events.
Events, anything.
Okay. So how are our officers compensated? Compensated?
At that point, if they are needed for an event, that's, that's, that's counted as billable through the King Street.
Yes.
So King Street would compensate them?
Compensate the city of Lake City, we would pay our officer.
Okay.
Yes.
Vice versa.
Correct.
Now, if it's an emergency situation, typically that, we don't.
Well, we're, those arrangements are out after the fact. We don't want to mingle about money in regards to an emergency.
Okay. But the thing about it is, if, if someone is requested to come there, you still, the officer still needs to know how much they're being compensated, if it's in line with where they, if King Street is going to compensate them even more or equal to what they're making here.
If I understand what you're saying correctly, it's on a planned out event, let's say King Street, I don't know what festivals King Street holds, if any. If they hold a festival and we know about it ahead of time, then yeah, the officers will be advised, look, you're going to get your normally hourly pay, pay rate, or you're going to get whatever King Street officers are getting for that festival.
A stifle on top.
If it's an emergency situation, typically it's the officers that are already working on shift that respond there. Some of them respond there. So they're getting paid their regular, regular hourly rate.
So what happens to the case if an officer is not on shift and they're needed? You still send them?
They get called in.
King Street?
Yes, leave that overtime.
Okay. So that, does, does that allow for coverage here in Lake City at the same time in the event this happens?
We still have coverage.
Yes. We wouldn't leave Lake City unattended to go work in King Street, no.
Okay. I didn't think you would, but just.
No, 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 ma'am. This, and, and again, it's just a, it's a force multiplier, if you will. If, if something happens and we have to go to King Street in a law enforcement capacity, it, we're covered legally. If we're not there just operating without a policy, without procedures, or without supervision or anything like that, it just covers us legally, basically.
Okay.
And, and vice versa, it covers them as well.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Patrick.
If none, all those in favor, by show of hands. Next item.
Mayor and Council, ordinance number 2022.003 for the first reading, and ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval of rezoning property located at 208 West Cole Road, tax map 00169-31-258, consisting of 9.42 acres belonging to Science Unlimited of Lake City, South Carolina, and all matters related thereto.
Thank you all. The floor is now open for a motion to approve ordinance 2022.003 for first reading.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2022.003.
Properly moved in second. Questions?
Now that we have annexed based on their request them into the city, and we also, you'll get to the second one, 278 Cole Road, by rezoning this under what Randy, Chief Digger has zoned OIA, it gives them and gives us a better opportunity to do with the property in the whole area as we see fit, as that property is being developed. It won't tie us down to one specific area. So if we do one property, we have to do the whole area with the same zoning. So that's why he's doing it OIA.
For the sake of the audience, can you tell them what OIA is?
Basically, it is the, is the official code that gives you the right to basically do any type, hotel, residential, corporate, that type of information. You're not tied to an industrial site, meaning that you can only put industrial there.
Okay. But what is OIA the acronym for?
I, truthfully, I did not look that up.
Okay.
It's on page 32.
Is it on page 32?
Office.
Thank you.
Office, institutional apartment, so.
Okay. I have a question. You says the 9.42 acres belong to Science Unlimited?
Science Limited of Lake City.
Science Limited of Lake City. Okay. Now, who, who owns Science Limited of Lake City?
It's the same company that was right here by the senior center.
Kenny Salles, if I'm not mistaken, he is the registered owner of the property. And the business.
Okay. Is he an employee of the city of Lake City?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Not anymore.
How long has he not been an employee?
I can't answer that question, honestly. It's been a couple of years.
What difference would it make? I, I asked if he was an employee, because if he is an employee of the city and he owns his business, in my mind, and what I've been, what I understand, it's a conflict of interest as an employee, but he'll say he is no longer employed.
No. I don't think he was an employee when he moved off of Ackland Street. When he moved out there, he was no longer an employee with the city of Lake City at that point.
You don't see where there was a difference if he's unemployed? Yes, there is a conflict of interest. But he's still an employee of the city and, so.
All right. Let's, let's move on.
Well, I'm an employee.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just a quick question. I was looking in the packet, and would this, I'm just trying to be clear on when it said there may be an increase in the city of Lake City's tax base?
What this does is increase the Lake City tax base. It's not saying we will increase. What it is, when you bring a property into the city of Lake City, that means you get the tax dollars for that business. Whereas it going to the county, it now belongs to the city. Once all the documentation is filed with the state and the county and whatnot, we then get those, just like you pay your taxes on your home, he then would pay the taxes to the city of Lake City for operating his business in the city of Lake City. That would increase our tax base. And that's what we really need to do, is start increasing the tax base as opposed to increasing the tax rate.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. If none, all those in favor, by show of hands. Okay. Next item.
Mayor and Council, for your consideration, ordinance number 2022.004, first reading, and ordinance for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, for the approval of rezoning property located at 278 West Cole Road, tax map 00169-31271, belonging to the city of Lake City, South Carolina, and all matters related thereto.
Okay. The floor is now open for a motion to approve ordinance 2022.004 for first reading.
Move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second, third. It, properly moved in second. All those in favor?
Question.
Sorry about that, Richard cutting you out there.
We own the property. It's still, it's a former Florence-Donington technical. When you, when you rezone, you got to, we're zoning the whole area. So we're doing it, it has to be done as we annex the property, and it will be rezoned.
Who owns the rest of that part down there?
Various people own property out there. One, and one that Chief Digger is talking to right now is the Sadnik family. They're considering to be annexed into the city.
That pretty much takes that whole side up.
Pretty much, yes. They have that big compound there.
Sign place is the next place.
How about the Kubota place in there? Can you see?
We're taking them one at a time.
On Davis Street, on Davis Street with all the houses that, those are Connie.
I think that it, because you're right there on the line that runs into the county, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. That's all the questions? All those in favor, show of hands. All right. Okay. Next item.
Resolution, Mayor and Council, for your consideration, I'd like to present to you resolution number 2022.012. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval to change the date of the Tuesday, May 10, 2022, regular council meeting to the next business day, Wednesday, May 11, 2022, and all matters related thereto.
Okay. The floor is now open for a motion to approve resolution 2022.012.
Move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Questions? If none, all those in favor, by show of hands. Next item.
Mayor and Council, for your consideration, I'd like to present to you resolution 2022.013. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval to begin the process for the Church Street water tank rehab and all matters related thereto.
Okay. The floor is now open for a motion to approve resolution 2022.013 for approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Questions? If none, all those in favor, by show of hands. Next item.
Mayor and Council, for your consideration, I'd like to present to you resolution 2022.013. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval to begin the process for the Church Street water tank rehab and all matters related thereto.
Okay. The floor is now open for a motion to approve resolution 2022.013 for approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Questions?
I got a question. So what exactly are we optimizing?
Basically, what we're going to do is start the grant process. We've had pictures of the Church Street tank. I sent it to all of you. It is due for inspection at the end of this year. This will start the process to write the grant, to get the money to help pay for redoing that tank, and, and engaging AECOM to take care of that. I will say that the next three are pertaining to funds that we'll be using the American Rescue Plan. All three of these total up by submitting the grant application less than what we were had on our sheet to do the checkerboard, which was $400,000.
So right now, you're, you're saying approximately $125,000?
For just the, yes.
Just for this one may come from the ARP.
Right. And we originally allocated $400,000, but if we move with this, because there's a deadline of March 20, 2022, to get the application, it would only cost roughly $125,000.
Okay.
These are estimates until we actually sit down and put the pen to the paper and put the application together.
Is, is this inside the tank and outside?
This is the outside part and making sure it will meet the code and the inspection process before it starts deteriorating and rusting and so forth.
So this, this is going to be based on if we get approved or?
Yes, we want, it's got to be done one way or the other. We have it on the AR, on the AR request for $400,000. If, and, and they're telling me the money's there, so we should have no problem getting approved. That we would only cost us roughly $125,000 as opposed to the $400,000, $500,000 that's expected to, to do the job.
How long will, will it take? Do you know?
No, not at this point. This is the process of putting the application together and putting all the pieces in place to figure out what actually needs to be done and take place.
Okay.
They, they've done a preliminary inspection, they'll do an in-depth inspection to write the, the grant application and to do an estimate on everything that needs to be done.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I got one on, so $3,000 is underneath our $5,000 payment for, I guess, the RFP, RFQ?
The $3,000 is the, actually the cost of writing the entire application and seeing it through to the approval process.
Well, see $65,000 for the engineering, like, would I have to do a RFQ for that amount?
Once they send over, no, not for that amount because they are already our architect, our engineer, uh, on file. Now, I will say this, this is, since we have a time limit on this, we're moving forward, but my recommendation when we started reviewing this is we start doing an RFQ to recertify or look for new engineering firms so we just don't tie ourselves with one because we've been with this company for many years. So, so they don't just cake us for granted. We need to do an RFQ to reevaluate the marketplace.
But if we approve this, is it gonna proceed to with AECOM?
This one, yes, AECOM, yes.
We gonna proceed with them?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
But when we have a chance to actually do RFQs?
We would, we would do an RFQ request for qualifications and have that in place so we could probably have it done by July.
Yeah, I can see what Mr. Hall is saying. It's the grant deadline being March. You don't really have too much of a choice.
Gotcha.
And changing orders midstream is usually not optimal.
Okay. It's just because of the time we have?
Correct.
Yeah, because the grant deadlines, they do not screw around. You hour late, you ain't in the pile.
Okay, any other questions? If none, all those in favor by a show of hands? Next item.
All right, Mayor and Council, for your consideration, resolution number 2022.014 for your approval. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the process for relocating a Blanding Street and Graham Road pump station, a relocation and all other matters related there too. Um, I will add to this that this pump station, uh, is also would be tied in with, as y'all had already approved, the Blanding Street land conservation project. It has allocation in there sewer lines and pump station. This one also would, this would be the pump station we would tie into that and it would alleviate having to put a brand new one there. And Ricky Sims is here. If y'all have any questions in regards to that, I ask him to be here since he knows our sewer and our water, um, in his league.
We'll get, we'll get this question for him. All right, the floor is now open for a motion to approve resolution 2022.014.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Questions?
Got one.
Just asking.
It's with regard to CDBG, so I might be wrong on this. Can we have more than one CDBG out of the town because it's a condition for the town?
We can have more than one, yes. Yes, yeah. It's different programs that you're applying for within there. Right, and right now the federal government's got money that they're trying to get dispersed out. Yeah, and there's more to coming.
Okay, any other questions?
What kind of monies are we looking at for this removal?
That, that's what I hear is right at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's the max?
That's the estimated max. That's, that's the estimated max is what I'm being told. Until they sit down and literally do the detailed application, the grunt work on what actually needs to take place and then cost it out, right now they're saying seven hundred and fifty thousand. Now, we also use that, this, and as you would see, it's approximately a hundred and ten. The other one's a hundred and twenty-five. We're still within the guidelines of the checkerboard that we originally set for four hundred thousand. So basically, you're gonna get three projects done for what we allocated for one project.
Yeah, because this was not, this was not put in there before.
No, it was not put in there before, but this is one that they now determine needs to take place. And since we already have to deal and facilitate it on the land conservation grant, and there's some funds sitting on the side for that, uh, it got kind of blended in here because it's something we do have to now address. We obligated when we signed the land conservation grant. So this will suffice in doing two things that we need to happen.
Where on Graham Road is that pump station?
If you're turning, if you're coming from Church Street down Graham Road, the first entrance into Palm Circle, you won't see it. That pump station's actually below ground and actually sitting on Highway 90. That was the second thing we needed to do to kind of get that thing back across the street on the corner of Blanding and Graham Road.
So that's where Pam had to have a lot of water issue?
Yes, ma'am, and that's one of the other things too. Here in the last four, five months, we started.
Right.
It started escalating over there, so the pump station's probably, probably thirty-five years old.
About my age.
It's right on the road. Has anybody ever hit that thing? Oh, they wouldn't cross it.
Wait a minute, isn't that the corner, um, you know where the, by the McNair House right there?
First corner.
That corner, right there, uh, the West Palm Circle? Because you have east, well, it used to be east and west, but now it's just Palm Circle. But I notice there's something sitting there.
Yes, yeah.
It's actually sitting on that corner. Uh, you won't see it, it, uh, it couldn't have been placed above ground because it would have been interfering with the view of traffic in just about every direction. So it is a, it's a water ruck pump station, but it's below ground, very, very concealed. At the time that it was redone, that was on a face, uh, they couldn't have established a submersible pump, but they just upgraded. I don't know what year Palm Circle was built, but that station was originally built to serve, you know, that subdivision.
Okay, so you feel reasonably sure that this would remedy the problem with the water?
Sewer, yes.
Sewer, okay.
At any time, those kind of dust up, it was really not a good design to have them that way. But it didn't have much choice in the system operating in place when they redid it. They had to put what they could work with considering the application of being used on it. So it's below ground. You have to go by that corner on the wood, you'll see the cement with the wheels, solid cement slab.
Uh-huh, that's the one I'm, in my mind. Mm-hmm.
Are you going back underground or come above? No, sir. And when it moves across the street, it'll be like the normal pump stations that you see with fiberglass, little building. It's gonna be a little car park over there by the ballpark. No, sir, it would be on the corner, on the outside corner.
Of Graham Road?
On the corner of Blanding.
Okay, okay. I think that subdivision was developed in about sixteen-five, sixty-six, somewhere around that time.
This is the second pump station that we upgraded. This is what Pam had with at that point down. Being able to relocate it would be actually out of Highway 90. And then it could serve a great area, like we were saying earlier, maybe it could tie, should be able to tie some of the ballpark, bathrooms, whatever. Instead of using the pump station, maybe you can get some gravity fluid there. Won't eliminate all the areas that they're trying to develop over there to build it, if they have some.
Okay, any other questions? If none, all those in favor by a show of hands? Next item.
Mayor and Council, for your consideration, uh, resolution 2022.015. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the process to begin improvements for Carver Street neighborhood and other matters related there too.
The floor is now open for a motion to approve resolution 2022.015 for approval.
Move to approve?
Second.
Properly moved in second. Questions?
Yeah. Is that, is this, uh, American Rescue money?
Uh, yes, we were told that based on the last release from the federal government, we now can use this to help alleviate this because it's dealing with stormwater and there's some sewer lines that are involved in this, so it ties in together.
This has nothing to do with dilapidated houses?
No, sir. This has nothing. This has to do with sidewalks collapsing, uh, holes up under the roadway from where the stormwater has rushed up under and keeping it from caving in. And plus, we now been, we don't notice if someone gets hurt, we're now liable.
And there's a sidewalk also.
Yeah, that, that's part of.
On Ruby Street?
Do you want to go ahead and name out the streets that this all is pertaining to? We labeled it Carver, but there's several streets that's pertaining to.
It's labeled as Carver Street, but it's actually, uh, U-Rand Drive, Randolph, Lily, Ash, James, or Ruby.
Okay.
Ruby Street. And this sidewalk, Curry, and Gutter, it needs a lot of repair over there. That, um, it was done, and actually, it was a CDBG grant that was done in nineteen seventy-nine. So there was a little bit done to that area since nineteen seventy-nine.
It looks it too.
Okay.
Okay, there are any other questions? No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So, um, like he, like, um, Mr. Cook was asking, this will be on the American Rescue plan, but we're hoping that the grant will cover?
The bulk of it.
The bulk of it, okay.
We're only doing approximate and we're only guesstimating right here until you put the pencil to the paper and can figure out exactly what it is. You're looking at hopefully the worst case scenario is what I asked for.
Is Lincoln Avenue listed in that list too? Lincoln Avenue? We need to discuss that too, real soon. Yeah, we need to put that on the next, um.
Now, there's some things going, there's something going through Lincoln with the, um.
Stormwater.
Yeah, the stormwater.
Yeah, that will be on the back side of Lincoln. So that will help with that.
Okay, any other questions? If none, all those in favor by a show of hands? Next item.
All right, uh, Mayor and Council, before I go into my monthly report, you found on, on your desk when you were here this morning, this evening, this report here, uh, this is information that I wanted to share with you. This is through our public information office. And just in January alone, we've, we've roused up enough news in TV time that the city's not normally getting. Uh, we had the editor in chief of the morning news here and Ms. Tracy and Mr. Laster took them on a, a tour of the city and he was very impressed with the way the city looked now. And since then, they've engaged him and we've gotten all this news coverage for the city, and this is positive news coverage for the city of Lake City, not just the negative. Uh, they were here again today doing a, a TV, um, for TV news regarding something you'll be talking about this evening. Also, we want to pass out to you before we go any further, this report here is, uh, projects that's currently underway that we're working with Haiti and the departments. Some of them are already complete, but some of them we're continuing to work with. I'll share with you this. These, these are the two pages are the list. Oh, I'm sorry, I got one for you. It's right here. So you're aware of what the city's going on. Also, I'm gonna let you know that when you talked about the other night, lighting in the communities, we've sent over to Duke Power a complete list of lighting requests. They come back with specific addresses, but they also came back and said, we already have set up a, an agreement with them and paid the fee for them to change out our lighting to the new halogen lights. And at that point, they're saying that a lot of these streets that you see dim now will be much brighter once they get to the point of changing these out. We are on their waiting list, but there's so many that's requested it. And if you've been in Florence in nighttime, you can see they pretty much have changed all their lighting too. It does make a big difference on the streets once those new lights are put in place. So they asked that we, we consider, they're gonna hold that list and consider that we wait and see how this new lighting will do for us once it gets in place. But also, if they go back to the list, we're gonna need exact addresses that they need to address to put new lighting in. So to let you know, we are, we have worked, reached out to them regarding the lighting problem.
Is it entrances or is that a pole number?
Should be pole numbers.
Well, they said if there's no pole there and we want it in a place that's not a pole, they want an address.
Yeah, I can understand that, but as it sits now.
They're going to be changing out the lights on every pole.
Yeah.
So they're asking to give them the opportunity to get those lights changed out.
So on every pole?
That's my understanding. We've already paid the fee. Every, every pole that has a light, we'll get a new light fixture.
And then we can proceed?
And it should brighten up that whole area.
Then we can proceed with the list that we?
That I've already sent them. They wanted to see, make sure that we, we got what we paid for and that it did something for us.
Did they give you a timeframe?
No, we're on their waiting list.
And that was done a little while back. It just wasn't done like yesterday.
We did that in, uh, probably October. That we paid their fee in October.
Tell them they got their money to get on the job.
I think it's like everything else, COVID.
Send the money back.
They're short-staffed and whatnot. Um, and now, Mayor and Council, I'll present to you the financials uh, for the month of January. Uh, general fund revenue, uh, we brought in four million, two hundred nineteen thousand, fifty-six percent of the budget. We had expenditures of four hundred seventy, four, four million, seven hundred sixty thousand, which is sixty-three percent of the budget. We overspent our revenues, five hundred forty-one thousand, seven hundred eight dollars. In the water fund, we had revenues totaling nine hundred fifty-nine thousand. That's sixty-one percent of the budget. And we had expenses of eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, which is fifty-seven percent of the budget. We have a surplus of sixty-one thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars. In the sewer fund, we brought in, uh, revenue of one million, eight hundred sixteen thousand, sixty-two percent of the budget. Expenses of one million, seven hundred forty-two thousand, sixty percent of the budget. We have a surplus of seventy-three thousand, seven hundred forty-seven dollars uh, in the sewer fund. And that's the, um, financials for the month of January.
What's, what's your biggest month of collective?
Uh, probably, I want to say, uh, January and February because our taxes come in. And that's a big, big lump. And then I want to say, um, April, May into June, and that's when our, our municipality business license money comes in. And that's the brokerage tax, the telephone tax and the insurance tax. So those are huge amounts coming in. Other than that, we have our normal cash flow through the water and sewer department. Mayor and Council, for your approval, I'm presenting to you bills for the month of February. Bills number one through eight for your consideration for payment.
Okay, the floor is now open for a motion to approve bills, items one through eight, um, on the February eighth agenda, which is tonight.
Make a motion to approve bills, items one through eight?
Second.
Been properly moved in second. Any question or discussion?
My question, two and three, who one of these people did for us?
Two and three. They are IT company and we are renewing, having to renew our firewall, which is the security for the city. Um, and that's the annual fee for that security. They have brought everything up to date. Uh, we don't get hacked anymore. It keeps all the riffraff out and we're not being, um, hijacked. So it, it's, um, we checked around and basically they're local, they're Florence. Uh, he's, he's a local person from Lake City and that is really the going rate for IT services. You know, the only other thing we could do is hire an IT person, uh, on staff, but then they would have to stay up to date on everything that transpires throughout the IT world. And we have what, um, they handle every building, this building administration, building, the fire department, the senior center, the, um, waste water treatment plant, the, uh, public, uh, public works building. And anything that we add to the city, they, they take care of it. The onboarding with the e-ticketing, uh, and the cameras from the cars when they pull up to the back door, they're brought in and they're downloaded to a disk here on site and sent over to a server. And it's, we're backed up probably, um, in an hour, ten times an hour, and it's sent to five different locations for our safety. So if we ever get hijacked or ever get held for ransom, we can just pull our backups at any particular time and replace that. So it's expensive.
So now which one, number three is the annual renewal for Fortinet Services?
Uh, that, that's the firewall services and whatnot. That, that keeps the riffraff out, so to speak. Yeah. And that, if something were to happen and we were to go down within twenty-four hours, we would be back up. If we bought the cheaper stuff, we could be gone seven to fourteen days without the proper assistance. So we're buying services plus a guarantee that within twenty-four hours, they would have us back up and running.
When, when are we gonna start hauling an old sludge?
We have, uh, we're waiting for the truck. And again, I hate to, I know that I get tired hearing the word too. The gentleman that was supposed to go pick up the truck from Philadelphia got COVID. So he was not able to travel. So they have no one that they can send at this point. Uh, they're hoping that they have it here by the end of February. They have two weeks that they're gonna do their testing and their, their, um, quality control. And then they'll turn it over to us and do, uh, uh, training on that. Matter of fact, we got a horse, uh, the, uh, grapple truck back here. They're wanting to do the training on the same day, but it's looking like I'm gonna have to get them here to get the training done so we can get that truck on the road. but it's looking like I'm gonna have to get them here to get the training done so we can get that truck on the road. But it is, it's finished, it's waiting to get to South Carolina. And then we already have the twenty-yard containers, we give them the thirty-day notice and we move on.
Okay, any other questions? If none, all those um motion to approve the bills?
All ready for the motion to approve?
Okay. All right, all those in favor, bow your hands. Got so long that, that got lost.
Patrick, do y'all, the police department have a report they want to share with Council this evening? Thank you.
For the month of January, the police department responded to seven hundred and eighty-four calls for service. Out of that seven hundred and eighty-four calls, one hundred and eighty-three of those were traffic stops. We responded to sixty-six berber alarms, that's just alarms. Forty-one domestic calls, thirty-nine follow-ups, seventy-eight property checks. And the list goes on, um sixteen suspicious persons, fifteen traffic accidents in the month of January, seventeen disorderly individuals, thirteen fire alarms that the police department responded to, seventeen escorts, that includes funeral escorts and whatnot. Eleven harassment and threatening reports, seventeen assist motorists, sixteen trespassing, et cetera, et cetera. Out of those hundred and eighty-three traffic stops, there was, it's a hundred and thirteen incident reports that was done. And we had thirty individuals arrested for the month of January. And this, this goes on to say that there was thirty-eight warrants issued, I'm sorry, fifty-four warrants issued, thirty-eight arrests warrants served. So that's on top of the original thirty. And what I was looking for is actual traffic tickets issued. So that hundred and eighty-three traffic stops, there was sixty-three citations issued that had a monetary amount. Someone had to pay a fine for them, the rest of them were just warnings, verbal warnings or, or written contact tickets. And that pretty much sums up the month as far as patrol and investigation is concerned. And out of the arrests, also eight of them were drug arrests and the rest of them appear to be misdemeanor arrests. And that's all for the police department.
Thank you, Patrick.
Thanks, Patrick.
Mayor Council, that's all I have for you at this moment.
Okay, um at this time, we need to go into executive session to discuss a personnel issue, personnel um and need a motion to go in to executive session.
Make a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters.
Okay, gotta put for personnel.
Make a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters.
All right, second, who give me the second? Okay, all, all those in favor, bow your hands.
Item is a resolution. Bring this item number...
Resolution 2022.016. Mayor Council have for your consideration and approval, resolution number 2022.016. A resolution for the city of Lake City, South Carolina, seeking the approval for the process to begin in the implementation, public service recruitment and housing program and all matters related thereto.
Need motion for approval?
Make a motion to approve resolution 2022.016.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Questions or discussion? If none of those in favor, bow show of hand.
Thank you, Mayor Council. That's all I have for this evening.
Okay, see the council members report. William, we start with you.
Yes, I would say I would like to see some of that American money come into our area that if people can see some results, especially when it comes to Deep River and Beauregard Street. That traffic for people walking to 52, they're in the road, they've been in the road for years. And if the money is there, that use some of it to make it more convenient for people that in wheelchair and walking and that kind of thing. That's one of my things I would like to see a difference. And also, I mentioned to the mayor, I think in Leroy Station, where he has his cars parked on the sidewalk. And it brought to my attention, people with a stroller or with the wheelchair, they have to go on the grass side and swipe his car. Because he has it halfway on the sidewalk there. And it's like, you know, it being utilized and not his property. Where he can put the car further over his property, he got them on the sidewalk. And as of today, I look at it, I saw the cars are still the same way. But several people had came to me about that. And I mentioned it to Ms. Robson, I knew that's in her area. But please, could someone look at that?
Chief have Patrick follow up on that because we, I got that call last week. He should have worked on that already, so just see what's going on there. But it was given to him when she issued the call.
That's on Carver Street?
No, no.
No.
Yeah, we need to...
I'm just blessed to be here. I thank God for the years that he has given me. And I look forward many, 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 many more. And so, happy birthday, Wilhelmina.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Wilhelmina. Y'all help me sing.
If you don't make it.
What'd you say? What'd you say? What did you say? Thank you all for coming out. So glad you came. And I'd love to see that, some of that American rescue money too. With sidewalks on Carver Street. And those, there's some sidewalks also on Moore Street. They have some on one side, but not on the other side. And both sides of Carver Street. Want to see sidewalks on Floyd Avenue. That's it for right now. That's all I can think about. But I'll be getting with the rest.
Okay, thank everybody for coming out on this evening. Bringing your concerns and staying aware and bringing your awareness about any community and city issues. Please continue to encourage others to do the same. Thank everybody that's watching on Facebook. Past events that we had, we had a great MLK virtual event. It was a success. Our speaker was Pastor Paul Lamaris. And we also had our young people to give poems and presentations about unity in our community. The vaccination clinic that was at the high school and Wesley Chapel was very successful. We had about 60 people that were vaccinated on that day. Most of them was their first shot that they were getting. The next one will be, the next one will be on February 19th at Wesley. Flyers will be coming out soon on that. The Hometown Legislative Action Day was very informative and interesting. It was great to see some of the House representatives and speak with them. Upcoming events, like I just said, February 19th would be another vaccination clinic. February 22nd, the Community Group of Lake City will be celebrating Lake City Black History in memory of Frasier Baker. And that would be on February 22nd at 12 noon at the Marker on Church Street. So please come out if you can. And I would like to thank the interim city administrator, William Hall, and everybody that was involved with the COVID-19 testing site on Cold Road.
And they're still doing it. 278 Cold Road pre-testing.
Thank you so much. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks. Everybody be safe.
Thank y'all for coming and happy birthday, Ms. Wilhelmina.